You know what I mean? It doesn't make sense.
So as it relates to the cost of the bylaw officer, which is where we're at, right now, we're at a position where we're going to talk with the RM going forward and maybe we can cost share this position. As far as enforcing bylaws, it's my opinion either enforce them all or you enforce not. You have a problem downtown, there is no question we'd rather shoot downtown, but you also have issues in the other ends of this community that are being ignored. There's some very, very bad neighbors at the south end of town. And that whole situation is being ignored. Whereas the previous bylaw officer, I know for a fact, was trying to remedy some of that. Because the south end of town is where my business is. I know what some of the problems are down there. You're uptown, then you're at the school, and you're at the mill. So it's not just one area. Either you enforce them all or you enforce not.
But I think though Herb, and I agree, you have to enforce all the rules, but you have to pick the important ones first. You're never gonna hit them all at once.
But Andre, if you live on Bingle, I guarantee you there's some residents down there who are going to feel that those bylaws need to be enforced because of the bad neighbor.
And you're absolutely right.
But we're talking about as if we've had a bylaw enforcement officer for the last thirty years. What was the last time?
No, we haven't. We haven't for about two years.
Yeah, and when did we have them before then?
We had for two years before then. This was a new position.
But we've had like sporadic things.
But that's the problem, and I'm not saying, and please don't dismiss it, I don't think it's important to have what you're talking about. What I'm saying is an argument is straight up, it's difficult for me to enforce a bylaw or to have Jen enforce a bylaw when we're gonna nab you, but it's okay, they can do it over there because they're not important today. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Because Jen and by the today or this week.
So it'll be a guy that's gonna complain. So what we're seeing is, it's obviously, it's council's decision and your priorities, but what we're saying is, we either enforce them all or we don't enforce them because you look like you're picking at people and then we end up in trouble.
But you can't enforce them all.
No.
You can't get everybody all the time. You can only get some of the people some of the time.
But you're not gonna pick and choose for some complaint, is what we're getting at.
We could talk about this forever. I'm not against it, but I think that's like a year. That's like a year, a year maybe down the road. But I mean, you guys decide.
That's fine, just as long as we have the support.
Just so I can point something out, we were all elected to decide. It's not you guys decide, it's we decide.
Well, but what I'm getting at.
Just wanna point that out.
Yeah, but what I wanna point out is that we've been talking about this for, I don't know, like twenty minutes. So we know where I stand. So we're to move on to another topic. So we need to decide what everyone's gonna vote on and where they wanna go. Because already, we're gonna leave this and we're saying that we're gonna meet with the RM to see if we can cost share. So I don't wanna be sitting here in a month's time saying, "Okay, so we're gonna cost share the project." Well, I didn't vote to cost share the project. I actually probably prefer us not to talk to the RM about cost sharing it because I don't really see that we should be cost sharing anything right now with due to bylaw enforcement officer. So that's why I'm saying, you guys decide. This is my vote. I'm saying no. So then, we're not gonna move forward till everybody kinda says what they wanna say. Whether it's yes or no.
So right now, you're basically saying, we shouldn't pursue discussions with the RM.
Not if it's gonna come back as, I mean, we have a discussion, but if it's gonna come back as, hey guys, we decided that maybe it's gonna be thirty or forty or fifty, what do you think? We kinda said yes, I guess we're going that way. I don't know what this meeting is gonna all entail.
It's a money issue for you? Is that what you're saying? Like you don't wanna spend more than fifty a year on bylaw enforcement?
No, I'm saying I don't know, I don't know what I wanna spend on. I don't know if I wanna spend anything on it. That's right, yeah, I don't know if I want to. Because I have, that, the downtown part and the other part I talked about already is more of a priority for me right now. But that's just my opinion.
So I'm sorry, I'm just confused. So York, we want to pursue bylaw enforcement? Yeah, yes? Is that yes? Do you know, I'm sure.
Well, here's my opinion. So I'll just step back because I actually thought that I was just bringing this forward as a discussion. We need to deal with what's happening downtown. That's kinda, when we sat at all these public hearings and everybody asked us all the questions, we all had these things, and we believed that that was an important thing we had to do. We had to deal with the street people, all this sort of stuff, beautification of downtown, make pride in the community. What I'm saying is that, what I believe that we could do is scrap the standard job description of a bylaw officer. And can you combine something that, yeah, they're gonna work with the downtown people, supporting the chaplaincy programs or whatever it happens to be, and be an advocate with them. But in the interim, is there certain things that, if there's a bylaw that needs to be enforced, that this person could do that too? I don't know what the job descrip, how much time it takes for a bylaw officer. So I think as an open discussion, before we start digging in positions, what are we actually trying to accomplish? So there's two things. If you wanna have a bylaw officer, then somebody should bring that forward, which I think maybe they are, and say, "We need a bylaw officer and this is the reasons why." What I was bringing forward is, I call it a bylaw officer by accident because I didn't know what the hell to call it. But we need to do something else as well. And I'm gonna support that. Prior to, I'll support a bylaw officer on its own. Somebody's got a good idea on how to do the bylaw officer and it makes sense for us, I'll support that, but I don't know enough about that. But I do know that we need to do something else. We're not changing anything downtown. And maybe this supported person or something, I don't even know what it looks like. So let's sit down and have that discussion on what that looks like without having to make a decision what it is. And maybe we end up in the same spot.
I just don't know how somebody would address, like, you're talking a little bit about the street people too, right?
Yeah.
Now, how do you address the street people or get somebody set up to address the street people if you can't, you have no repercussions for what they are doing? You can't enforce anything on them?
I don't know, that's why I said we need to talk about it.
That's what I understood from the officer that was here the last time is he said that really there's nothing that can be done.
I know, I don't know what we can do. But saying we can't do anything and then just accept what we got today then and let's stop talking about it. Or we say, "Hey, what can we do to try to help?" Maybe having a presence of somebody corralling people to a certain place for help. I don't know what the heck it looks like. I don't know what the skill level the person needs to have to do that. Is it a forty hour a week job? If it's gonna be Monday to Friday, eight to four thirty, isn't gonna work. It's not gonna work. Because everybody knows the schedule.
Don't come up to four, eight thirty, don't come up.
Well, whatever happens to be. I mean, and it's not so much as trying to corral people. It's saying, well, can we provide their support? Can we have a connection to their home communities? Maybe that's it. Hey, this guy's parking on the street here all the time and I walked by there and I got a complaint, I'm gonna go over there and deal with it.
Okay, so what's our next steps?
I think our next step is anybody to go to this tour, to this educational thing.
Okay.
And see what can be done or can't be done both ways. And leave it alone until everybody comes back and then sit down later. Because we got a lot of other stuff that we have to deal with in between here. I don't think we need a full, full bylaw officer. And Andre has kinda explained that, that he kinda reworded that wrong, like the person. In the other respect, there's enough stuff going on around town that's not being looked at. And it has to be looked at. So somehow, in all this, we all have to put our heads together and come up with what Trevor's saying, what Andre's saying, what you're saying, what Randy's saying, and come down to a person or persons or whatever to do this. And I don't know how we're gonna come to it because it's actually two different avenues.
We've talked about this.
We had a coalition. You're on that actually, Andre?
I have another meeting, so I don't know what the coalition is.
Well, because they just restarted it because we handed it off to someone else.
Oh, okay. I can't wait till the first meeting.
I agree. Step one has to be either February twenty second or March the first and you and Rod having your conversation at AMM as to what can actually happen, what can actually be enforced. Without knowing what we can and can't do, we're talking in circles.
Yep.
We've talked in the past about possibly the dog catcher. If he wasn't busy in his area that day, then maybe he could go over and he could do some of the bylaw. We've talked about it. And I'm glad that you brought it back up and that you want to have it on the table.
My feelings are hurt now.
But I feel until those courses on the twenty second and the first are taken, then it's just kinda, we're just gonna keep talking and talking and talking until, like I'm doing.
Maybe the Art of Patrol will alleviate some of this for us too. If they're gonna be involved in the uptown area and community, they can speed these people along that are hanging outside the banks or hanging around wherever in large groups. And dissipate them and get them to move on to somewhere else.
Okay, so what we're doing then is attending the workshops. We're gonna talk to Rod, we're gonna come back, we'll have all our information and we'll make an informed decision.
Can I just one quote? Did anybody read through that mitt of information about our enforcement and stuff?
I read the job description.
Yeah, because you, no, 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 not the job descriptions, the actual bylaws may help a lot. Because I know Jen, you had spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of time with the lawyers on it. That may help.
The bylaw enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So that just may give you a little bit of a perspective with that too. So when you're reading through us.
So we'll come back.
So I had Andre, possibly Bill, Larry, possibly Trevor, you've heard, to attend March first in Brandon.
Yes. But also too, like there's a whole bunch was going to AMM too. So you can talk to different communities with them.
They might have something up too.
It's the agenda.
So you will let me know tomorrow so I can meet with people as soon as possible?
Which the first is when?
Okay, we're done for. Do we need to talk about the enforceable bylaws tonight or you wanna bring that back?
Like that's what Randy was talking about.
That's what I, yeah. And my apologies, that's where the confusion was. Because it was, I was still put bylaws on, that's what I thought we were looking at. I didn't realize we were looking at something different.
Council review of facility tours. Are we going to do this tonight or do we wanna have a special meeting to discuss this?
Special meeting to discuss a special meeting? Because it's gonna take like a while.
Agreed.
Can we maybe come up with some of your, could people maybe come prepared?
Yeah, like I said before.
With some of the issues?
Email them to Randy, get them started.
I thought when we, I thought when we talked about this though, that it wasn't us gonna provide the, all the details, that the owners of those buildings or the department heads or whoever's responsible for a certain infrastructure would do their own inspections.
Yeah. But it is my understanding, Andre, that council was gonna go through because they said it was a new set of eyes and it was gonna be meshed with ours.
Yeah, no, and I agree, but you know what? I would like to see the old set of eyes first, personally.
Yeah, I think it's fair if council gets their list put together and have it for you when we have the meeting.
Yep.
And then we can compare the notes. A meeting date? When's council in March fourth?
Second, maybe the second or fourth maybe.
Eleven and twenty fifth?
Yeah.
Well, how about Monday, March the fourth? I will have to double check on that with me, but. January, Monday, March the fourth.
The actual facilities, right?
Yeah.
At what time?
At what time we were.
Five in here?
Yeah.
I don't know the meeting night day. Exact time.
Yeah.
We'll just have to figure it out.
Yes.
Andre, community washrooms.
I'm afraid to bring it up now, but again, just asking how, I don't have the solution. I mean, I know it's budget year, or budget time. But, you know, we talk about the issues we have with visitors and street people and everybody else. And if you know, or everybody should know, there's no place to actually use the washroom downtown. And my suggestion is, is should we be asking our engineering folks to come up with some options on how we could find the most suitable place for visitors and others to use the washrooms?
You think building one, is that what you're thinking?
Building one, you can buy them.
In order projects?
You can buy a decent, like nice buildings.
They're actual buildings, they're not just like the actual buildings. They can be found in.
My guess thing would be location. Like, does a town own any property in the downtown that is usable?
Uh, the Anixia Park. That's true.
One place I never thought of, but that's true.
Downtown.
I mean, it would be as good as places any.
So who would be responsible for cleaning it?
The town.
It'd have to be pointed and operated.
No.
It can't be just open.
No.
It can't be just open.
Why not?
My hometown had one and it was the worst wreck that you've ever seen in your life. It cannot be just straight open for everybody to walk in. It's impossible.
Maybe it's impossible for somebody to come up with a point.
Well, then it's unfortunate. Like it would be, I'm not saying that it would become a hangout, but already at the Royal Bank and different places that are open, that are heated and stuff like that, they become a hangout place. And if you don't have somebody right there to police it or look after. Like it's a good thought, it's a good idea. But it would certainly have to be ran like.
Or if our shelter is open for certain periods of time where they have a washroom and it's closed for certain period times when, so they have no access to washrooms, then why couldn't it be open when those times? Like in opposite times?
When it's needed.
When it's needed.
Would that not be usually late hours at night?
No, shelters open at night.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Again, just an idea, but maybe you can ask.
It's a good idea, but there's just so many, so many things that.
Well, we complain about people using the washrooms on the street.
I know.
And then we sit back and say we don't wanna provide a washroom. And I know they're not allowed, some people are not allowed in certain businesses. And so, I don't know what we're expecting.
I understand all that, but it's just like.
Would it be possible to like build a washroom that's hooked up like to the actual shelter itself? That just gives you access, a door and a washroom?
Yeah, that might be something.
Yeah, like, but just like enough to get the toilet and the sink and then that's it? So you can't camp out inside, like that kind of a?
For sure, yeah, that's something that could be looked at. Like there's, there's a lot of different options and a lot of different ways of approaching this. Like do you approach it from a tourism standpoint and have it somewhere centrally located? So because there are a lot of things, where Trucker's Fest is being held right in the middle of the right kitty corner to the lot that Herb had mentioned. And where are those people supposed to put the washroom? They're supposed to rely on businesses, other downtown businesses, but you know, the thing is.
Where, what business could you go to?
Well, that's just it, John Tiger. They have a.
Or Miss the Paw or whatever.
Miss the Paw or, you know, it is what it is. Like, it's, it's an issue that this town has a lack of public washrooms.
So can I, can we just make a suggestion, have engineering look into some details and come up with some options for us, what they think?
Do they have time right now?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Is their budget is their priority right now?
We are onto budget, right?
Maybe this is about the time for twenty nineteen.
Well, that's what I.
So who is it that we could get to look forward at it?
We'll just move it to later on in the year after budget time and look at, like you say, period capital project for two thousand twenty or whatever.
Not to pull it on the homeless shelter, but I mean, a lot of the clientele are using the shelter. They're over in that area. It would be hard to come up with a quote to see how much to put a washroom that could access from the outside in, just a small bathroom. And then I guess town would, would coffer up some funds to help.
So is that the scope of just the homeless or are we talking a community bathroom? Because there's a big difference here.
Oh, for sure.
So I just would like that a little bit clearer.
Well, I think it was brought up originally to help.
Public, it would have to be public.
But most people, like, most people is.
You can't say who can, can't.
Yeah, exactly. It's a public washroom. Could be used for anybody, but who do you think's mostly gonna use it?
Yeah.
The people that don't have access to a.
A washroom?
Yeah.
Who could be people driving through town?
Exactly, yeah, it could be anyone.
That's all I'm looking for is your scope, yeah.
People driving through town, are they gonna go to the homeless shelter and use it?
No.
Probably not.
But that's not, I think it's two different, two different. If I'm gonna, yeah, if I'm gonna go to the bathroom, I'm gonna go to Subway.
I mean, if you really.
Buy sub.
It's like going to any other community, I don't really wanna look through. To see if they have a bathroom like that. I'll go spend a few dollars in a graug and use their washroom or I'll go to a restaurant, sit down at a table, use their washroom or I'll go and ask somebody politely to use their washroom. And most times, they're not gonna say no. It's if you come in drunk and disorderly, guaranteed, hundred percent, no, you can't use my bathroom, it's for customers only.
So is it fair to say the intent was to address the homeless folks walking around?
Yeah, I think so.
There seems to be a suggestion that we should discuss this with the homeless shelter people?
Yes.
So if folks are active with the homeless shelter? So could you speak with them, Chad?
For sure, yeah. Manitowocology owns the building, that the homeless shelter operates out of. The homeless shelter has access to, as of right now, the center portion of the building to be used as an emergency overnight shelter. You know, it's something that can be brought up.
Could you bring it up? And you know, we can't make plans for someone else as well. So if you wanna ask them if they're retaining the idea?
Yeah.
And you know what? This is maybe in terms of downtown revitalization and destination marketing money and things like that. I mean, if it, you know, takes away the fresh.
There's only, what, a five hour gap from noon till five?
What's that? Where there isn't.
Where there isn't any place available, noon till five, right?
Basically, yeah, from about nine thirty, from eight, eight in the morning till about nine thirty, there isn't access to a washroom anywhere. And then from eleven thirty to one, there isn't. But after that.
I thought it was open for four hours.
For example.
The soup kitchen, I thought that was like noon till, or pardon me, eight till noon, I thought that was.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so again, we've got a consensus. We're gonna have to talk to the homeless people, see if there's a spot or something. That's our direction. I'm not hearing a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. All right, policy for.
Can I just make, before we move on, just one thing? So how do we put items on the agenda for discussion ongoing? And not require like a, an actual action where we can just break away and say, "Okay, Herb, me and Herb are gonna get together and come up with some plan and some ideas or."
If there's a committee established, you can have a committee report.
Okay, so that's, so the next time we.
A committee meeting.
Yeah.
Or you may wanna establish, like if it's from things you brought up, you might wanna establish a special committee.
Excuse me for one.
But that still has to come back to community.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, and again, that's a little done.
Policy for reporting on attendance at courses. Somebody brought this up in that discussion.
I think it was you, Andre?
I think it was.
On, okay, so.
Would people travel on courses? You wanted some reporting or something?
Don't you get a report on what people?
No, when we were saying what kind of expectations? Because you guys had different ideas of what you seen as an expectation.
Well, I guess if you're investing money in somebody going away for trips or like, for example, I went away this last week. I created a trip report on what I actually did and some of the actions that are coming out of it. And whether it's worthwhile to continue or not doing that. So I guess we invest in somebody going to a conference or I would expect that you have some sort of trip report. To the manager, not to us. Like, I was only asking the question, what's the guy get out of it?
No, and that's good. It was just so that we had a good direction of where this was going and what you were looking at. Because last time we kinda jumped all over it. And then everybody had different opinions because it was like, no, it comes to council. And I'd said too, well, they work for me and not for council. But I agree with you that you need to understand the value of it.
So if somebody goes away, you spend, I don't know how much it costs to go on a trip, but say three thousand dollars. Shouldn't you say, was that worth it?
For sure.
Because if it wasn't worth it.
Yeah. We basically, yeah, we just basically report it, but we can do it formal reporting. We do it when we have our staff meetings, like before we have this meeting. But we can put it in a formal report. Perfect.
Payroll and accounts, disbursement report.
So we would require a resolution for pay period three in the amount of one oh two, five eighty one, twenty eight and town checks number two two three six two to two two four three oh in the amount of eight oh seven, one fifty six seventy one. And electronic spun transfer in the amount of one oh five, seven seven one eighty. Some of the highlights that I'll just mention off the top or our CMP, Laurel's holdback of eighty four thousand dollars. And we have the subdivision on Patrick Avenue that was almost seven thousand dollars. So those are some of our ones that's standard a little more than normal. We would also require a resolution to accept the check number two two four one one from Northern Building Support.
Subdivision on Patrick is split through, or is it?
Between us then the two people that are purchasing the property. You probably remember that, it was a while back that we started this process. It was a subdivision on Patrick Avenue?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, so that's what that is. And then it's this town of the paw where there's a larger check for almost ten thousand. That's water billings that we pay in our facilities, but also deductions from staff that pay their water bills through their payroll. So does it help when I tell you guys some of the bigger tickets or?
Mm-hmm, sure.
What's Laurie Cook?
She's our cleaner.
Cleaner.
So is everything settled with the onset?
I think that would have been your holdback that was released.
Yeah, there's nothing that's.
Shouldn't be, because when I look in here, it's a little back.
Okay, cool.
So fingers crossed.
Yeah, and then you signed off on paying that.
What do we have with JR Cousins? Does he still work there?
Yeah, probably, but it would have been that one.
That would have been part of that whole thing.
Yes.
Any other questions on the checks? Uh, what do we got here? Lunch meeting with Christian Marois. He's coming to town.
Yep. He's an astronomer from the history.
I'll go.
Well, there's a lunch meeting, there's also a, um, a gymnasium.
I am super interested.
On a lecture. So do you wanna do both, the lecture and the lunch meeting or?
Sign me up for both, yeah.
Okay.
I'll probably go to both as well.
Really?
Stars, you know?
You're not in the stars all night.
We leave a star after.
No, it's just.
About stars? That was something else.
Maybe tell me about future?
That's what I thought. That's an astrologer.
Yeah. Well, Andre's.
Never mind.
I can pull up some cards there, Andre, I can read a future too. I can, enough.
Brett, we so much appreciate your patience. You're up. You're up for the next three.
I'm gonna call a contact on the first one.
Yep.
No, for sure.
What do you guys wanna tackle first, I guess is my question.
Lakefront lots.
Okay, lakefront lots. Bottom line is, do you guys wanna amend your zoning bylaw or do you not want to amend your zoning bylaw?
Okay, so Brett.
Oh, the hundred feet, sorry, that's really what this whole issue boils down to with the lakefront lots, um. The hundred foot, oh, sorry, Mary, do you wanna, no, sorry, sure.
I'm not sure if everybody knows.
I don't know.
So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Oh, I guess that's right, sorry, yeah. Just trying to get here to tell you guys what to do, um.
Yeah.
I'm the community planner for Northern Manitoba and so my name is Brett Mack, I work with, you know, you guys, Snow Lake, the RM, Kelsey, Lynn Blon, Thompson, Churchill, you name it.
You're based out of Thompson?
Uh, based out of Winnipeg, we used to be based out of Thompson, but they shifted the office down to Thompson. And so what we're going to talk about, I guess, is the first issue will be the thirty-three lot subdivision that took place at Clearwater Lake. Um, the application commenced in two thousand and nine. One of the recommendations from Conservation and Water Stewardship at the time was that a hundred foot setback from the high watermark on Clearwater Lake be implemented into the subdivision design in place of a public reserve, which would have been fifteen meters plus another fifteen meters of reserve, um, mandated by the province, which would have been thirty meters up. So it was essentially a wash. So what council at the time chose was to go with adopting the recommendation from Conservation and Water Stewardship that the hundred foot setback be implemented as a zoning bylaw. And so that was brought in, I'm gonna say around two thousand and ten or so as part of the conditional approval of that thirty-three lot subdivision. And so the, the main thing being with the setback is that there is no permanent development within that hundred foot setback between ordinary high watermark um, and the hundred foot level, or sorry, hundred foot mark up on your property. Um, there is allowed vegetation removal disturbance up to twenty-five percent within that width of your lot, but that's the maximum clearing you can do. Um, so that's kind of a quick rundown on the issue and now what we're encountering, I guess, is that there's the possibl- the possibility or the possible desire to amend that zoning bylaw, um, and reducing that setback from a hundred feet to seventy-five feet.
Correct.
And so I don't know if you guys want to hear my opinion on it or if you want, you know, like I'm, I'm kind of turning it over to you guys, cause essentially it's, it's council's bylaw to amend as they see fit. Um, it's not controlled by the province in any way. We have no, you know, authority to tell you guys, you can't attempt to amend your own municipal bylaw. What I can tell you is that there will be significant pushback from Conservation, Water Stewardship, um, and even my department if an amendment was brought forward to reduce that setback. Um, I keep hearing a lot of existing development on Clearwater Lake being thrown out as a precedent for why the new development shouldn't have no setback in place essentially, um, or this setback shouldn't be existing. Well, when the lots, and I'm only gonna just call out Jen here because I'm the only person, she's the only person I'm familiar with who has, found that has a cabin on Clearwater Lake. And so how long? Yeah, and so when the development where Jen's, I think it's your parents, right, have their cabin, when that was created, um, the setbacks that were in place were fifteen feet, somewhere in that range, simply because thirty years ago, we didn't know, um, the level of damage we were doing to our lakes by clear cutting all vegetation right to the shoreline, putting in turf grass and plopping your cabin right down on, um, the lakefront. You know, we're seeing it everywhere with the water quality issues we're facing throughout our province right now. And so what has been done now is a blanket recommendation is applied to, to any new development. You guys haven't been singled out by, you know, Conservation or Water Stewardship. Um, it's any new cottage, lakefront developments of this nature has that automatic hundred foot buffer being, um, recommended by Conservation and Water Stewardship. Um, it's there for very good reason. Um, you know, given everything we know about repair and health and lake quality and, you know, the the draw of Clearwater Lake, um, as one of, you know, the top, I can't remember what it was ranked, I was talking with, uh, with Mike Armstrong versus Conservation and it was ranked one of the top five clear freshwater lakes in the world. And so they're not taking things lightly in terms of it being protected. Now, maybe I'll ask you guys what the, the desire is now to reduce that hundred foot buffer and take it down to seventy-five feet. Cause if, if it's being done to accommodate the odd person that has already constructed out there and failed miserably in following proper construction practices and following proper bylaws in place, um, to me, that's not a strong reason to change a bylaw.
Cause that, that is the issue though, right? So how many people do we have that have done that?
Well, they're cleared though.
And there's numerous lots that have been cleared that need to be reforested, um.
So what are you saying then Brett, that even if we asked for that, uh, variance, that we wouldn't get any?
Which, you're not asking for any variance, like, you guys don't have to ask the province for anything, this is, this is your.
No, but what is the pushback, you said you, we would get pushback from?
Cause Conservation and Water Stewardship is gonna reiterate the same statements they gave when the subdivision came online, um, the same statements they have put together in advisory notes that have gone to the minister, um. One of the main reasons that the hundred foot setback was put in place along the thirty-three lot development there, um, not that it's not applied everywhere else, but especially here is given the conditions that that area of the lake experiences during storm surges, um, ice damming, property damage, erosion. Uh, this was all analyzed by Conservation and Water Stewardship when the subdivision was put forward. And they make a recommendation based on the best interests of everyone.
I don't think any of that water land is low lying, I would talk about it, it's sloped, right?
Well, that's a whole nother reason why you don't want to shorten your buffer, because the more sloped your land is, the greater your runoff speed is and the slower your retention of that water on site becomes and given the the shallow levels of topsoil here that are able to retain moisture, you're basically going to be sending runoff straight down to shield and into the lake.
The, um, the issue of like, as you pointed out with Jen, they've had the cabin for thirty years, right, and rules are rules, that's a valid point, right? But why is it that the province doesn't enforce new construction in that buffer zone? Because there are lots and lots of people who have built new sheds, new fish shacks, new decks.
I can't speak, well, fish, sorry, fish sheds, decks, docks, that all has to be done through Crown lands.
Yeah, cause you mentioned no development with a hundred feet and yet I know that people rebuild.
Oh, and I would like to see the permits that these guys have taken out with Crown lands, if that's actually been done or not, because.
Well, shouldn't you guys be enforcing your bylaws?
I'm not Crown lands.
Oh, oh, I see.
And that's not my bylaw, that's not even their bylaw to enforce, if somebody goes out there and builds a shed and Crown lands doesn't know about it, how can they enforce it? More often than not, people aren't gonna go to Crown lands for a permit to put up a shed on their property. They're gonna just do whatever they want, which has already happened out in the thirty-three lot subdivision with one person doing as they please with building their, their residence not to code, not to existing bylaw. And this should come as no surprise to any property owner out there, when the lots were sold, a comprehensive package was put together and given to every person who purchased a lot out there saying that this hundred foot setback existed, that no variances would be granted within that hundred foot setback. Um, it was, it was clear as day to everybody that was out there and to now be saying we weren't aware of this or we didn't know this happened, it's, it just doesn't jive.
So at the end of the day, it's our decision?
At the end of the day, it's your decision.
Okay, cool, any questions for Brett on this issue anymore? No?
Well, what is the opinion here of council, do you guys feel that it's?
I think what we're gonna do Brett, is take back and talk about it some more among ourselves. We appreciate your input. If you would, let's move on to five point two.
Which is?
Closure of the walking paths.
I wanna declare then, I'll step forward.
Sure.
You had something to say on this one or?
I was just asked to come and speak to the issue, I don't have anything to say other than.
Okay, so we basically decided at our meeting, we're gonna meet with these people.
Yeah, we didn't expect that to actually come up as a result.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so then if you want me to say nothing too, and I won't.
Is there some history though that you have, that why were they put in there in the first place and what the needs and is the need still there, it wouldn't hurt.
They are put in there, things like this are now a mandated aspect of every subdivision design in any urban area in the province. So if you guys were to come in with a new forty lot subdivision design and create a new, you know, little enclave somewhere, whatever, we'll say right over in behind here, we'd wanna see some sort of connection into here, we'd wanna see some sort of connection into here because the nature of design is not so much focused anymore on being completely centered around the car. And as the one person or delegate who came and spoke, it's quite nice to have infrastructure that isn't entirely devoted to moving automobiles. Um, by shutting down these walkways, it's essentially counterproductive and counterintuitive to common subdivision design practices. Those would have put, been put there simply to create connections to the outlying areas.
But is it, I mean, I know what you're saying, but I mean, in, some of the issue I heard was that there was a school, someone brought it up a- as well there. What I've heard before, there was supposed to be a school there where the Cudmore and other areas where that's where they put the two paths, so. I mean, if, if that didn't develop and something else came, then y- y- you know, now to have more options.
Stuff has come, because now U C N is there, the Wellness Center is there, there is two schools just up the road further there that closing these two, when you look at it, if you go on Google Earth, you can see that you can make your way all the way from down here currently up into U C N is where, right? In here? Somebody with a little more familiarity wanna guide me, is it up in here and here, wherever? You can go all the way from down here to U C N, to Margaret Barber, to the Wellness Center without having to essentially put your health or your health, yourself in any high traffic areas where there is heavy vehicular use as the people were mentioning along Cathedral Street where your speed limits are not monitored, people are driving like, whatever. And so by closing those walkways currently where they are, what you're going to do is sever these connections right in the middle. Um, if you wanna speak to the vandalism and the graffiti aspect and the criminal element, um, that falls on a combination of the town and the residents. I, I was kinda shocked at when the one person said, you know, in the summer, we have these trees that grow over and create a lovely canopy. Well, then that falls on the resident, cause they're creating this unsafe space, if they want safety in the space adjacent to their house, you as the property owner are then responsible for taking measures within your control to create that safe environment in partnership with the town. And where the towns are responsible to come in would be ensuring that lighting is working consistently on both ends of those pathways, whether garbage is picked up on some sort of a regular schedule, you know, and people keep talking about the bear clown coming and patrols will be walking these walkways. The thing is, once they're closed, they don't come back. Like, there's no doing a, a one-year trial run, closing this path down and then bringing it back. Um, I'll use, sorry, I was just on Google Earth, like this one right here, this is the pathway that leads to the park. This would be pathway A, I suppose?
Yeah.
And so if we wanna close this pathway down, it's not just putting up a little fence here and saying this pathway is closed or building a cross fence to join up if there's any connecting fences there and leaving the space in behind. Cause then you're just creating more issues, what happens is a public, sorry, it's been a long day, um, a public reserve closing bylaw has to be brought forth by, you know, the adjacent property owners. So they're gonna have to pay for a survey for that. They will then have to have a subdivision application that decides how this will be split up. They will then need to remove the cement that is there in place. Um, I was talking with Sam and he says there's been a fence that's been built up to this line now. So this property owner would have to remove the back of their fence and either A, purchase the entirety of this pathway and close it within their yard or split the other half with the person on the other side of their property. It's not just as simple as, as slapping up a barrier and saying this pathway is closed, cause all that does is invite more vagrancy. Um, all you're doing is, it was true, it was called a Band-Aid solution to call, or to, to close these pathways, that's all it is. There's, you're not addressing anything by closing it, you're shifting things to the, uh, I guess, the walkway along here, which I myself wouldn't take, you know, besides from the daytime, I wouldn't have my children walking along there um, during periods of night or Cathedral Avenue, which has highly unregulated traffic or down back alleys where there's less lighting, less eyes on the street. Um, and all that more chance of vandalism, given the fact that there's what, how many garages back there, an opportunity to enter into people's backyards, right? So closing public walkways does not solve problems of vandalism or vagrancy or, or property degradation. All it does is shift it to other areas that will then experience it. And like they said, are you gonna close down the laneway next? Are you gonna start to close down laneways in the downtown, because during the daytime, they're populated by people who have social issues, right? Like, you can't close away or, or legislate social problems out of existence. And so closing a walkway is not going to change anything.
You've been around a lot of communities, I'm sure you've been around a lot of communities that have been trying to close laneways or public access walkways, no?
No, no, like I said, they're now seen as, as vital links in, in modern subdivision design, so.
But, but I guess, I mean, I don't know how much you've looked at, like some of these pathways in my mind are, I mean, I know what, maybe some people think if you close one, you gotta close them all, but some of them to me, they're very, like, that one there is, like, you have to go into a cul-de-sac to go to it, but you could go two houses over and down from the length of the room down Cathedral and you're at the park.
Oh, no, and I said to say, like, in discussion with Sam, I said if any pathway was going to be considered for closure in all of this would be this one, because it's redundant.
Yeah, but, but even like, I mean, I do those paths all the time, we go down Traeger and I can, and actually my kids did it, they sit down, we wanna go down this one. So I can wave at my kids, they're on the one path on Traeger and I'm on the other, I'm kinda like, why are there two paths on the same street? What, what's, what's the?
They're literally seven floors down, but, you know what I mean, like, they're not having to.
So it's, it's not like there's, you know, five hundred people living on, on Traeger, there's, and again, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
Of use, it's about direction, one's gonna spit you out towards U C N, one's gonna send you towards downtown.
One's gonna spit me out seven houses down, it's not, it's, it's, that's, that's is what it is, it's not like it's giving me any more advantage, just like this one. So do I go down to the cul-de-sac or do I cut over four houses and down? Like, I, I don't know, and I'm not saying I would get, I, I wanna go close, close, I'm just being devil's advocate, because I, I actually take usually the, the route to go the other way, because it does look like, and you said it's the responsibility of, of the, uh, of the homeowner, after a while, I mean.
I said it's a responsibility of the homeowner and the town to come up with a joint solution.
But after a while, people get frustrated when their houses or their, or their, their fence gets sprayed painted.
Oh, and I get that, but I mean, if you as a homeowner are proud of creating undesirable conditions next door to you, that essentially invite in this, this element that you wanna get rid of, it makes no sense to me in that way.
But I guess the hard, hard part I, I have understanding is if it's for, if there were a lot of usage for that one, that say, you know, pick on this one, I'd say, wow, you know, this is, we gotta fix this problem, because there's all these people going through this area and you know, it's not, it's not really used that much. It's very, it's, it's, to me, it's like, I go down and like, there's a path here, why?
Well, I heard more evidence of usage today from the, the yes side than I heard from the, the close side.
I mean, but in perspective, we had sixteen people here, I mean, that's great, but I mean, sixteen people over, over five thousand.
But I mean, extrapolate, right, if you get four people that are against an issue and twelve that are for keeping them open, you need to get extrapolate numbers, it only makes sense. When you look at every correspondence that's ever been sent to the town, it's always the same key people pushing this issue forward. It's, it hasn't become strong enough to become a neighborhood issue. And that's because there's clearly more people here who see value in the walking paths than they do seeing them being closed. Because after nine years, you would expect if this issue was as dire as it's made out to be by. Because after nine years, you would expect if this issue was as dire as it's made out to be by certain aspects of that delegation, that they would've attracted much greater following to this position of these need to be closed for the safety of kids in the neighborhood where, when it's continually the same people over and over pushing the issue. And I get it, they live adjacent to it. So, you know, but the, the will of four houses shouldn't trump the, the good of, you know, the south, south half of residential area in your town.
Well, this is coming back on the agenda.
So what you guys, the thing tonight, they talk about cameras, we can't legally put cameras up, right?
Oh, yeah.
Sure can, we can.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, you got, and you can get ones that don't even need to be on a loop continuously recording, they're triggered by people that walk the path, they snap a picture of the people that are there. That's it.
Yeah.
And so it's all about visibility and I mean, the town should then be encouraging this lady who's happy about her trees growing over and creating this little spot in there to, to cut her trees back to create clear sightlines through here, then the town should be putting in white metal halide bulbs at each end of the walkway, right? Like, these are non-expensive solutions because the lights already exist in place, right? So let's, let's up the quality of lighting, let's work with adjacent residents to ensure that their property is A, secure, but also B, um, maintained in such a way that it doesn't invite these areas to be created essentially, right? And so it, it comes down to a joint solution, but, you know, in my opinion, closing all three of them is not, um, the be all and all, and it won't ultimately solve the problem.
Okay, well, so it's coming back on the agenda, so let's talk about taxing from the finance.
What do you guys wanna know?
Andre.
Andre.
I mean, like.
Don't leave.
Brett, I understand there's been some new guidelines and stuff, we wanna see as a community how we could utilize this.
Um. This is just some information here, it was a slideshow, I was gonna give it to you guys, but that's boring, um, so just pass it around and I mean. Make sure everybody else is looking good.